Alrighty, looks like it should be good. Hopefully it's good, had a little momentary hiccup, but anyway. Welcome to day 27, the penultimate day of the 28 days of poker study journey that I'm on right now. Hopefully a lot of you are doing this exact same thing. Either studying with me for the hour every day or studying on your own for an hour every day. It really pays off, I guarantee it. So today, day 27, hand reading practice where we'll look at my range and how my range changes. Based on my street by street action. We'll also cover my daily warmups and what I go through to warm up for every session I play. And we'll talk about gratitude and I'll make my own gratitude list. And we'll discuss the importance of gratitude in a little bit, won't get into it right now. First, let's go ahead and do some hand reading practice of a course. Alright, so looking at 25 NL games right now. Cause we've gone through a lot of those six max hands, you know, that hit showdown and stuff, so. Okay, so we're looking through winning hands and looking at carbon. We covered that already. Cut off, we cover those kings, ace king, this is really small pot though, I don't really want to. Don't really want to cover something so small, let's go for a bigger pot. Pocket kings and threes, let's take a look at this one here. Bet call and then it looks like no turn of river action, so we just got it in there, yeah. Let's see, what is this one, ace king? We've got a pre flop action was raising and then a bet and then check call and then check. Okay, interesting. Let's go ahead and review this one, some good action to look at. On a street by street basis, so let's do this here. Whoops, let me see, before we get to the action right here, we gotta fill out, remember you can get this sheet for yourself at splitsuit.com/templates? Looks like the MP, yeah, ace king off in the MP. Open pot and let's see what happens here. Slam it calls, two callers, great. Well, we're ranging ourselves in this hand, so the fact that we have two callers, it could, look at slam it only has 83 cents behind. He's unimportant in this hand, Liskinich is the ones that, or is the one that we're definitely paying attention to here. So, hey, nice flop, so first, before we get to the flop, what is my opening range in the MP? And two callers, where are they at? Oh, with position. Great, so my pre flop range. My opening range from the MP is, it's a mixture of these, it's kind of between the two. We'll just click the EP right now, I will often open in the MP depending on who is left to act after me. Right here as well, so we'll say this is about my range right here, it's only 214 combos, rather tight. But if you just look at the MP, you've still got one, two, three, four, five players to let, to act after you. And I'm not really expecting many three bets, but I don't mind three bets with ace king of course. But let me see, no, no, maybe some three bets from this big stack right here, no, no. So my range would be on the wider side of my MP range. But I feel that this is pretty good, I'm often folding ace 10 off and king jack and queen jack off here. So yeah, so I feel pretty confident about this range. This is my opening range, 214, 16.1. Alright, so that's our range right there and we hit a very, actually quite a, quite a decent flop of. King nine deuce, diamond heart, spade. On this, oh, let's give our opponent, I mean, I don't know, he's over calling here. Let's give him six, six, seven suited, doesn't really matter. Yeah, well, oh, it doesn't matter, so on this flop right here, we actually hit the flop only 24.9% of the time. On this kind of pretty dry board, let's see what if it were. Quite a bit more if it were a two-tone board because we have so many suited cards in our range. A two-tone board would help us a little bit more, but it's a, it's a, it's a rainbow flop. Three-tone rainbow flop, whatever, so we don't hit it that hard, but of course, our range doesn't hit it that hard, I should say. Our own hand, ace king offsuit hits us pretty darn hard, you know, we want to be betting for value even though we're out of position right now, for sure. So this is our range and then I'm assuming, I'm assuming we bet, good. So what are we betting here? I'm betting my sets to get value. I'm expecting at this point, this guy's just gonna get it in with anything here, any kind of draw, any pair, even if he has a deuce three at this point. Which he shouldn't because he called pre, but you know, he's a short stack, who cares? I'm assuming he can be doing a lot of calling as well, he has ultimate position, he's an aggressive player. He could raise us of course, but he could also be doing a lot of calls with any pair. Maybe raising us with like top pair hands and stuff, but this is definitely worth a bet and then worth a call if we do get raised. So we are betting our sets for sure, getting value, we don't have it, but we would. Betting our over pairs, betting our top pairs, pocket pair below top pair now. I would be betting these definitely because we can be getting called by nines. Any of these random pairs, any of these under pairs too, it's possible one street getting called right here. And like, let's say we did have pocket tens and we bet and we're able to get like an ace jack or an ace eight to fold. That's not the worst thing in the world and they could catch an ace on us, we want to get value. So if they choose to continue, we might be able to get value out of those non-paired hands. But if they choose to give up their over cards, then great, they just don't hit anything on the turn and we scoop up the pot right now. So they're worth betting, middle pairs, all those nines. What's his fold to C bet? Don't have any fold to C bet yet, he's inconsequential because of his stack, so we won't think about him. Yeah, no fold to C bet, on this board, it is a pretty hard board to hit, you could see our tight range had a hard time hitting. What about on a wide callers range? Now, we aren't gonna range our opponent here, but let's say he's on a decently wide calling range. On a king, nine, deuce board, he only hits it 20% of the time. So wider ranges hit this kind of board even less, he should be folding a heck of a lot. His overcall equals super weakness, so let's say he did have seven, six, he should be folding in this point. We should be able to knock him out and just get it heads up with a short stack here. So, I would say I'm betting my middle pairs, my weak pairs, I'm betting those as well. I think they're all worth betting because the wide ranges don't hit so hard. Ace highs are worth betting, one street at least, yeah, put those out there. No made hand, actually, no, let's not do the ace highs, let's include. Ace queen, ace jack, ace three, yeah, actually, the only ones. Yeah, I would say so, all of those, I'm down with betting all of them in this instance. Because, because of the such a dry board right there. Any draws are just gut shots really, or backdoor flush draws, so not too worried, no made hand. Well, those are some gutters, so we'll include them in down here, gut shots, two card backdoor flushes, yeah. So let's just say we're, we're C betting 100% of our range, we have a pretty narrow range. Might as well throw out that C bet with just about everything here, because he should be folding a heck of a lot. So that's our betting range, what happens? He folds, look at that, folding 83, he must have completely whiffed it, he had the six, seven right now, I bet. And then we get a call, okay, great. Turn comes the five of clubs, so this is our continuance range, 100%, 181 combos. You can see, of course, it's 100% of our previous range, but the combos dropped because. These of course are blockers to, to whatever, you know, to our combos here. Because there's a king on the board, we can't have as many ace kings and kings in our range. So that's why the combos drop right there and as we, as we get to the turn, whatever that turn card is, it'll drop our combos even more. Unless, let's say the turn was a deuce, not that, let's say the turn was a three. If a three hits, we don't have any threes in our range, so then it wouldn't drop our combos. But effectively, we have at least one of every card in our range, because we have every pocket pair and all those aces. Let's see here now, oh, the five of clubs comes. Great, at this point, the five of clubs doesn't help our range hardly at all. 27.1% of the time we have top pair better or an open and a straight draw, gut shot actually, we could have a gut shot here. At a 42% of the time now, but let's see what happens. We ended up getting called by the big stack right here, so we just check and. My, I'm checking here probably because to get him to bet at it, he's a loose aggressive guy and. If I bet, the five doesn't help his range at all, doesn't complete any kind of draw, doesn't add to any kind of draws that he might have. What, a seven, eight or a six, seven, I guess, oh, and he has six, seven over here. A six, seven picks up a gutter, but really it's just not much of a draw. I'm checking here because he's aggressive and I want him to bet, so my plan is probably to check call to get value out of the guy. Maybe even to check raise. So, let's see here, yeah, so I check and he bets a little under two thirds pot, so. Oh, and then do I check raise? I check call here, okay, so what am I check calling on this board? I'm not check calling my sets, I think I'd be raising those, over pairs? Aces, I would often bet the aces here, I don't think, actually the aces and ace king are basically the same hand, top pair hand. Ace is a little bit better than ace king, but I think I would be. Probably betting the over pairs here. I like check calling the top pairs, even the pocket pair below top pair, I'd be check calling here, definitely. Just to try to entice the guy to bet, it's also kind of. Yeah. Pocket pair below top pair and based on his bet sizing too, I think. If he made a bigger bet sizing, bigger than roughly two thirds pot, I might be. I might be check folding a pocket pair below top pair, but um, yeah, just two thirds, less than two thirds pot. Looks more bluffy than anything right there, or. Trying to go for a cheap, cheap steal with like some kind of a pair too, wanting me to fold my over cards or something. Middle pairs, I don't think I'd be check calling. The nine, no, because right now he could be betting his own middle pairs, that's why I'd be calling the pocket pairs below top pair, right there. Weak pairs, I wouldn't be check calling, I'd often be betting out with these weaker ones right here. I'd be betting out with my weaker stuff and with my stronger stuff to get value, betting out with the weaker stuff to get him to fold. Betting out with the stronger stuff to get value and then check calling to get value out of all the hands that are gonna fold. Should I just bet out all those middle pair hands? Weak pair, da, 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 check calling the gut shot, yeah, I could see that. Yeah, I just picked up a gut shot, so wanna, wanna try to see it cheaply on the river. Although I would sometimes bet at it too, but sometimes check call, ace highs. I wouldn't be check calling, I'd be check folding all ace highs. Yep, weak pairs, probably check folding those as well, yeah, so I've effectively narrowed my range down quite a bit here. 41.8, 74% or 74 hands. I'm check calling my. My, not middle pair, my mid strength, that's what I'm looking for. There we go, cool. Now, the river brings us a seven of hearts. So the seven of hearts, what, it only completes a six, eight, maybe nine, seven now has two pair out of his calling range. So the seven does make a few stronger hands than the ace king right here, but I think I have a lock on this hand. I think the way I've played it, I think a bet could be in order to get value out of weaker kings, out of a lot of nines. But he just now threw out a bet, I, it's probably best if I just check and then let him bet again, because I think it's possible. I bet and then check call, I obviously like my hand, the seven doesn't really help me or help him, so. So I think the only way for me to get value out of him is to check, let him bet seven bucks, roughly half pot, maybe even 10 bucks, roughly two thirds pot. And then just, just call at that point, because I think he's folding a lot of hands that I currently beat right now. Random nines, 10, nine, queen, nine, jack, nine, that kind of stuff, even the, maybe not the king queens, hello, I cannot read that Chinese, but thanks for following me buddy. Or gal, thank you very much, yeah, so I think I'm checking here just to get value out of the guy. I check and then he checks behind, let's see what he has. Actually, before we do that, my checking range. I think I would just check with all of it here at this point. Just make, oh whoops, didn't put the card out, the seven of hearts. I think I would just check here with everything and the reason why is like I said, I can't get value out of much, I don't think he's calling a whole lot on this board. It's possible he's calling a nine, but that would be getting three streets out of a second, three streets of value out of a second pair hand. It's doable, but uh. Pretty scary, oh, cool, thank you very much, Evolution, oh, I see right there, nice, thanks for joining Evolution. Yeah, I just, I really think that I'm not getting value out of anything, so I'm just checking here and then hoping he bets and I'm, I'm check calling is the plan for sure. So. 154 combos, yep, yep, yep. Good, checking them all there. So let's see what he ends up having. 78, oh, so I was close on my, on just putting him on a six, seven, but so he had a pair, why was he calling? Okay, so he called the flop. That's what he did, that's what he did, he called the flop. I'll just type it in as I talk. Call flop. Eight high with intention to steal when I check the turn. That's exactly what he did and then he had a pair with some showdown value. So he just checked because, you know, he was hoping to win the pot with third pair right there. Yeah, so that's what he plays, so now that's a good note to make on my opponent for sure, knowing that. Knowing that he's capable of that, yep, loose aggressive players are often capable of it, they call you in position and they just wait, wait for you to show weakness and then. And then they, they take it away on a future street, good, good, good. So some good hand reading practice right there, alrighty, so next up we'll talk about my daily warmups. Okay, so. Ace king off, my range, I would say that was a good hand reading exercise. We also got some value out of the guy with a hand that he would have folded on that turn right there. If I had bet, he would have folded the turn, I would have gotten no more value, I got an extra $4 out of the guy because I checked to him. So my warmups, my warmups are all about preventing tilt and that's why I do the warmup. I started doing warmups after I read about them in The Mental Game of Poker by Jared Tindler. It was, it was something that, you know, I had heard about warmups before. People talk about it and you read about it in articles and videos and stuff, but I just never did it. And then when I read about it in this book, I mean, and he gave it, I can't remember, it was like a simple three to five minute warmup. Like three minute warmup, very simple. And I just followed it and then I've just kind of over time adapted and created my own warmup from it. So in my warmup, I have six things that I always think about. The first one is why am I playing tonight? I try to keep my why close to me as it can help me to stave off tilt and keep me positive. So every session I'm playing, and I kind of, I have a lot of different whys, you know. One of my whys, one of my very common whys, actually, let's go ahead and start putting these answers in, is to. There, that's a, that's good right there, so. One of the reasons why I play is to make great decisions and to put my skills to use, it feels really good when I've been working on a whole week of C betting, for example. And I make some great C bet bluffs and great C bets for value because of what I'm learning, I'm able to put those skills to use. Another reason to play of course is to make money and another reason to play for me is to test my skills, just to see where I'm at, to test my tilt. Tilt avoidance or tilt. Tilt management, I guess you can call it, to test all the different skills, pre flop, post flop skills and putting in play. To test my people reading skills and my HUD stat reading skills, just, you know, I'm working on so many things week to week. That you just gotta constantly put yourself to the test and the way to do that is just to play poker and to think about the skills that you're putting into play. So that's why, that's, that's the first question, why am I playing tonight? Now, I always assess the mental state that I'm in right now, what mindset am I in right now? A, B, or C game, and if I'm not in my A game, can I get in my A game mindset? Can I do something like, do I need to step away from the computer? Go do something that's been on my mind, like maybe I have to mow the lawn today, but I want to play poker, but that's on my mind, gotta go mow the lawn. Maybe the kids are in the other room fighting, gotta go take care of that, whatever it is, whatever's keeping me out of my A game mindset. I need to figure out and see if I can't get in the A game mindset. Strategy focus, so choose one focus and you're playing your best, but your focus should be on what you're studying for the week. So every studies, or every play session, you just want to play the best poker you can, make the best decisions, pre flop, post flop versus this player versus that player. With this whole card, with that whole card, whatever, you want to make the best decisions. But you should be focused on whatever you're studying at the moment, so right now, we're studying the mindset, yeah, well. Tilt avoidance and tilt prevention and tilt assessment, we're studying that, so my focus this week is just paying attention to my feelings as I'm playing every session. And when my emotions go up and when they go back down and then kind of assessing that, making note on it to see if, to find some. To find some tilt patterns that I can take it, that I can start to work on and. Just to find patterns that I can start to work on and improving my, my mental clarity at the tables, so that's a strategy focus. HUD stat focused, most often it's related to the above strategy focus right here, so. You know, we have all these HUD stats right here, so currently in the podcast, I'm doing the C bet MED, minimum effective dose series. So when it comes to C betting and I'm thinking about C betting, I'm working on my C betting. I of course want to pay attention to the fold to flop C bet, fold to turn C bet, and then just the fold to river number right there. And if I pop this open, here's my fold to turn C bet pop up. These are some of the stats I should be focused on, but what I'll often do is just choose one stat. And it's most often related to that focus, so for example, I would be looking a lot at this stat right here. Fold to flop C bet and then occasionally pop this open to see what it is in position versus out of position, that kind of thing. So that would be my stat focus, I also have a five minute question and now this is a question to ask yourself to help you stay focused, you know. So some questions that I could ask myself is, am I making good C bets? Is this table still profitable? Am I? So those are some different questions right there, am I still in my A game mindset, any tilt feelings arising? Because in my phone of course, I have a. Tabata timer right there, you can see it, there's plenty of them, when you choose your Tabata timer. You can have it set, you see I have it set for five minute workouts, basically every five minutes as I play, this timer will go off. I don't use it every time, the five, the, the five minute question, but I use it in a good majority of my sessions. Every time that five minute timer goes off, I ask myself whatever question I think about ahead of time. Right now I'm thinking about or working on my tilt, so any tilt feelings arising? Every time that timer goes off, I'll ask myself that question and answer it, it keeps my mind focused on the idea of controlling my tilt. Let's see here, and a logic statement, this is a statement that helps to inject logic into my thinking and to get beyond tilty situations. I've created a ton of logic statements over time and you know, if you want to learn more about logic statements, there's this book here. I've also done a podcast or two on logic statements as well, so you can, you can go find those, it's easy enough to find my podcasts and stuff. But yeah, the logic statements just help you to get beyond those tilty situations. As soon as you start to feel the emotions rise because you got sucked out on, because your pocket king's lost a pocket aces, whatever happened. To make you, to put you on tilt. The logic statements just help to inject that logic and keep you focused on the game. Alrighty, so gratitude is something that I feel is super important, this helps. This helps me quite a bit towards keeping a positive mindset at the tables and a gratitude list or. Yeah, a gratitude list is something that I have created, I have a gratitude list of things that I'm grateful for in life. And let me show you this cool website, happierhuman.com/benefitsofgratitude. Alrighty, so I agree with you Evolution, it is very important with poker, the mental game, the mental side of things, so. The 31 benefits of gratitude you didn't know about, how gratitude can change your life. So we've all heard that, an attitude of gratitude, what the heck is gratitude? So, the benefits of gratitude, just a real quick, simple kind of a mind map right here. Gratitude leads to happiness, gratitude for your social contacts, emotional, personality wise, health and career. Gratitude really helps with so many aspects of your life, so you see it's 31 different benefits or. This is the benefits of gratitude, but then it lists all the different benefits down here. Gratitude makes us happier, gratitude makes people like us, gratitude makes us healthier. Nice little chart here talking about a gratitude journal and you know, how all these things are improved by gratitude. Gratitude boosts our career, gratitude strengthens our emotions, all these, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but there's 31 different benefits to gratitude. According to this website and you could probably come up with nine more to make an even list of 40 or something, whatever. But um, yeah, this was a great article when I first encountered it, I don't remember whenever, whenever I encountered it, good article, but. Let's see, in order to kind of instill gratitude in your life, to have, just to have more gratitude, you've got to think about what you're grateful for, you know. So for myself, I'm grateful for. My family. You know, all that stuff, so just when it comes to family, I have a loving wife, fun and happy kids, a great support structure, just. All the people outside of my immediate family, you know, aunts and uncles, cousins and all that kind of stuff, my brother as well. He's moving to Arizona, but still he's a lot of support and I support him as well, oh, and then of course. Parents or grandparents at this point, you know, because we have kids, so my family is a super huge part of a. Not part of my gratitude, I am super grateful for my family, I should say, they're the reason why I just, I do what I do, you know. Without them, who knows where I'd be? I don't know, don't even want to think about it, because it doesn't matter, you know, my family is the most important thing, next up is. I'm super grateful for my listeners and all the viewers, all of you watching right now. And all the listeners to the podcast and everything, you guys are keeping me keeping on with all your positive comments and you're just. Listening to the things I say is one thing, but then actually doing the things that I recommend, doing the things that I know work for me and then now I see that. You know, other people comment and say, hey, Sky, this podcast really helped me, I've been putting this into my poker game and it's helped. You know, just hearing that kind of good stuff keeps me keeping on as well, so I really appreciate that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a list of five different things for gratitude right here, health. What do I say? Well, just physically fit, I guess. So just when it comes to health, I mean, just a basic health thing right here. You know, I just, I'm physically fit, I stay active, I love going outside, love the outdoors. Playing games and sports with them and stuff, it's just a lot of fun going outside, this is a really important part of my life and it should be an important part. Of everybody's life as well, just, just getting out there and being active, sitting at the computer all day with what I do, you know. I'm creating podcasts, that's on the computer, playing poker on the computer, studying poker on the computer, communicating with listeners and viewers on the computer. Everything is on the computer, I'm on this thing for eight or 10 hours a day, well, I need to get out, I need to experience some other things, so. You know, that's what I do, I get out and experience other things and a part of that is just all the different healthy stuff that I do. Getting outside with the family, going for, oh, that's one thing too, my dog, I'll get to that in a second. Um, uh, just getting outside with the family, staying physically fit, getting some sun, which is super important, of course. All that stuff, yeah, health is really important and having just gratitude and happiness around my health is. Yeah, I think it helps me to just be a better player, uh, last longer at the tables, study better, uh, my mind seems. Seems well in place, seems well intact, you know, all that kind of stuff, so yeah, health is a very important part. My dog, now this is interesting, one second, uh, Bike King, like that you're taking time to focus on why we play and mindset going in. So many players either go play simply because they want to or they want to win money, which is not the base mindset you meet, you need. Totally Bike King, I, I agree with you there, one hundred percent. Um, my dog now, so my dog came into my life. Hmm, in August, uh, what, whatever, eight months ago or whatever. And, you know, I didn't want a dog up until this point, but it's been so great just going on, I do twice daily. Walks, uh, with my dog in the morning and the, and the evenings, and in the evenings I take my boys with me, cuz it's after school, it's usually before dinner. Uh, we go on a walk together and it's just, it's just a really awesome time going for a walk with my boys. We don't bring any kind of electronics, they don't play Pokemon Go, um, on the walks. And so we're just talking and goofing off and having fun, there's, there's three like local parks right around us that we can walk in five minutes. We walk to one of those three parks with the dog, they play on the slides and stuff, we goof off on the monkey bars and it's just, it's a lot of fun and. The dog, having the dog has really helped us to just get out there and have more fun. Before the dog, um, we wouldn't go on nearly as many walks, we would go on maybe a walk every like two or three times a month. Now we do it every night and then I do it additionally with her every morning, so she's a great dog, I love the dog. Um, something else that, uh, I'm, I'm grateful for absolutely is. So your great, your, um, your gratitude, your own gratitude list can encompass anything. I am super grateful that my kids go to school, um. So yeah, your gratitude list, I mean, you can think of a hundred things you're glad, I'm grateful for the computer, I'm grateful for, um, the internet. I mean, there's so many things, one thing I'm grateful for is school and it just, this occurred to me just this past week because last week was, um. A spring break and the kids were home with me the entire week, which, which was fun and it was nice having them here, but if I'm trying to get work done. You know, you know, kids are seven to nine years old, they constantly need stuff, whether, whether they want to eat a snack, whether it's time to make them lunch. Whether it's time to, um, I don't know, they wanna go, they wanna go to the park or they, whatever, they wanna go to the candy shop, whatever it is. I'm constantly, when they're home, I'm constantly bombarded by distractions because of them. Um, and so I'm grateful for school, it gets them out of the house for almost eight hours a day where I can sit down and focus on work. So that's another thing I'm grateful right there. Of course, I'm grateful, I said poker career, but just poker in general. Poker's brought so many. Uh, poker's brought just so many great things into my life, I've made some good friends through poker, I've had a ton of fun by playing poker, I've been able to. Um, create a career out of podcasting and video making and all this kind of stuff with poker. Um, I enjoy studying poker, which a lot of people just don't, maybe because they never have or they're just not scholastically. Inclined like I am, whatever the case is, um, poker's just brought so many great things into my life as well that I'm just super grateful for, you know? Uh, without poker, I'd probably be a woodworker, actually, cuz before I started playing poker, I was doing a ton of woodworking in the garage. Um, but then, you know, got into poker and then woodworking kinda took a backseat right there. My saw table, my saw table, my table saw is just sitting there collecting dust, all my power tools and stuff. But, um, you know, poker, I have more fun playing poker than I do, uh, uh, creating a bench or something, you know? Yep, yep, so that's my gratitude list, I really recommend that all of you check out happierhuman.com. Slash benefits dash of dash gratitude, I'll put this out in the email today as well. But then create your own gratitude list and then every day, think about the things that you're grateful for. You could do it during your meditations, on your walks with your own dog, before you play poker, it could actually be a part of your warmup. Just ask yourself that simple question and write it down in your poker journal, what am I grateful for? The dog, whatever it is for that day, you know? Alrighty, well, thank you very much, everybody, for watching. Tomorrow, we will do the final day, day twenty-eight of the, uh, twenty-eight days of, of poker study challenge here. So, um, thank you very much for joining me up until this point, tomorrow, we will be talking about. I don't have it written down, we'll be talking about, uh, cooldowns as a way of assessing tilt, we'll also talk about. Um, I don't remember, cooldowns, we'll do our hand reading practice, range versus range, cooldowns. And then the last thing was, I have it written down somewhere, I do not know, but we'll find out tomorrow, you'll see it in the email later today. Alrighty, thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate your time, you need more evolution, I got you. Well, there's twenty-six other days to watch if you haven't seen those already, buddy, so, uh, thank you very much, everybody, thanks Evolution, thanks Bike King for participating. And I'll catch you all on the flip side.